Light sources, we call them brighter or more brilliant light sources. And they come in two main varieties, synchrotron light sources, which are circular electron accelerators. As the beam travels around, you wiggle the beam and you create these intense bursts of X-rays. And so these devices are hundreds of meters around. So you can imagine there are many experiments going on simultaneously. Because you can wiggle the beam at any point around the accelerator. And then you have a similar device called an X-ray free electron laser, but it's a straight machine, more intense. The same principle of wiggling the electron beam. But you get much more intense, brighter, but you only have a few experimental stations. So that's sort of the negative of that. So you really should have a synchrotron light source before you invest in an X-ray. Light source. Okay, so the African light sources expected, okay, could, could, could everybody mute? Mute, everybody, please stay muted. Okay, the African light source is expected to contribute significantly to the African science renaissance. The return of the African science diaspora, the enhancement of university education. Training a new generation of young researchers. We are going to grow competitive African industries. And advancement of research that addresses issues, challenges and concerns relevant to Africa. And for African countries to take control of their destinies and become major players in the international community. It is inevitable. Please mute, everybody, please mute. Okay, everybody, please mute. Okay.
I only have ability to ask to mute if you can make me host.
Make Tabitha host. Okay, it's inevitable that a light source must begin construction somewhere on the continent in the near future. Because it will promote not only the, you know, the research outputs, but peace and collaborations among African nations and even the wider global community. So these are my opening comments. Let's see, Koteby, are you here? Okay, Koteby was next on the program to talk about the African strategy for fundamental and applied physics. However, he may be a bit late. So we're going to go directly to the next person who is Ian Swenson from the IAEA, the International Atomic Energy Agency. Because he's been leading a committee that is working on a workshop that we will convene in December from the sixth to the seventeenth. And we are going to teach students basic principles of these accelerators and the beam lines that are used to study samples. So with that, I will turn it over to Ian. Thank you.
So I hope you can, I hope you can hear me. Yes, so thank you very much, Sakazi. So there's a group of us, several groups of people involved, so including LAMP, the ESRF, University of Johannesburg, Cyprus Institute, and Sesame, ESRF and IEA. So we're all, I hope I'm not missing anybody out there. Oh, and of course ICTP, who are the Institute for Center, International Center for Theoretical Physics based in Italy. So this will be an ICTP school hosted remotely at Sesame. And it will cover three broad topics. One is basically the fundamentals of synchrotron radiation and accelerated chain, beamline design and such physical things. The second general topic is on socioeconomic impact, outreach and how you manage such a facility. And the third part is basically on applications and user training for some of the most common techniques that are applied at synchrotrons and particularly at the moment at Sesame with a focus on the techniques that are available there. So this school, it's like any ICTP school, you can register or will be able to register online shortly. It will run for about four hours a day for over two weeks in the week of starting December the sixth, which is a Monday, and ending on December the seventeenth, so one week on Friday. And the duration is to try and give us a reasonable time window for people from as many different time zones as possible. At the moment, we're just finalizing the program and as soon as that's done, I assume we will get it out onto the ICTP website. Excuse me. So with that, I will hand back to Sakazi. You are muted, that's Sakazi.
Thank you. Yeah, is there any question? We want this to be a little bit kind of on the informal side, which is why we didn't do this in the form of a sort of a, how do you call it, the webinar where you just have speakers. So we want to have this as a, as a community discussion. So don't be afraid. If you have a, if you have a question or comment, please just raise your hand and we will, we will get to you. Okay, I don't see, okay, I see a hand raised. Roland, please. Yes. Hold on, Roland is for Roland Bruno.
Yes, my name is Roland and I am with the CDBTO. And it's really, it's the first time actually I attend one of the events. I heard about the light source and it's really enriching to know what is the potential of that technology and bringing that on the continent, on the African continent. And by the way, I'm from Cameroon. So bringing that on the African continent will be really a great asset and I'm interested in knowing the, the, the type of profile, the profile of the resources that are needed to be able to, 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 I mean, to actually achieve this target. I am not personally a physicist. I am more a statistician and a data scientist, but willing to help, willing to support this initiative because I believe in it and I believe it can help us achieve a lot. So that was my intervention there.
Okay, great, fantastic. So why don't you do the following? Send me an email. It's just my first name dot last name at gmail dot com. And I will take that up with you and try to get you plugged into what we're doing. If you look at the flyer, my name is there with a K for my middle name, but middle initial. But just my first name Sakazi dot Ntingwa at gmail dot com. But I think as we proceed, you will learn more and more about the kinds of resources that may be needed. Okay, Aska, I think you are next.
Yeah, thank you, Sakazi. Actually, I just want to say that I noticed that I have Catherine Mwaba from the Afra who is attending. So I just want to let you know that I have people from Afra Committee who are attending the meeting. I know that Dr. Catherine Mwaba, who is the Chair of the Partnership Building of Afra. Is, is, is joining the meeting. So that's the information I want to share.
Okay, great, fantastic. And it would be great for, for us to have you to say a few comments too, but we'll come back to you, okay? All right, with that, I think we should move on and give a few more details about the African Light Source Conceptual Design Report. And it's organized, the Chair of the Committee that is organizing this is my great colleague Tabitha Dobbins from Rowan University in the United States. And I will turn it over to Tabitha for comments. Tabitha.
Thank you, thank you, Sakazi. And I am attempting to share a screen now. And I think you all are looking at, what are you looking at right now? Are you looking at a first slide deck?
Yes, yes, we see.
Wonderful, wonderful. And then I will put it into screen share mode. And it's wonderful to see everyone here. And it's a very, it's a very positive attribute that so many people are interested in the African light source. Its construction and its, its realization. One of the first things I always like to start with is sort of a different aspect of motivation. We often can motivate with respect to, with respect to a topic based, to other scientists. But I want to just start with a generic motivation and talk about the true size of Africa. And this graphic here was created by a graphic designer, Kyle Kreis. And I use it to show that the transportation distance to go to a synchrotron light source that is not on the continent is quite a bit different than just taking a flight from New York to Chicago or New York to one of the synchrotron light sources on the West Coast. Or even in going from, if we look at the distance to go from Johannesburg to the light sources that are located in, in Europe, such as the ESRF or, or others. It's really, it's really geographically, the true size shows that this is quite a bit of a distance. And so it's very important that we consider positioning a light source in the continent of Africa. So I'll make a few remarks about the team and the work that's been done to get there with my 10 minutes. And let me just start my own stopwatch so that I know approximately where I am. I'm sorry, the slides keep changing. I have an automatic 15, 20 seconds on each slide to try to keep me on time. And, and apparently I'm not obeying to the on time, but I just want to start out by gratefully appreciating the African Light Source Executive Committee. This might be a little bit dated in terms of the photos and the composition of the team. But this team began working quite a long time ago. I think it was in, in the 2000s, like 2005 or 2006, when Simon and Sakazi came together and began to present on this topic and this idea. And it was in around 2015 that the effort grew to the size of the committed individuals that you see here as the executive committee on the screen. Now Sakazi has already gone over the Grenoble Resolution, so I won't do that again. But in 2015, at the first conference of the African Light Source in Grenoble, this was the inception of the, of these resolutions that would start the pathway towards a light source for the roadmap towards a light source. And since then, we have held two additional conferences. One in 2019 in, 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 in Lugano, Ghana, just outside of Accra, Accra, Ghana. And the other was a virtual conference in 2020 because of the pandemic. At the Ghana Conference, it was where we first had from Ernie Malamud, the, a presentation about the conceptual design reports and the true need that would be the true scope of the team that would be needed in order to affect a conceptual design report. And so we went on and from that 2019 meeting and we formed this team of people that you see here. It's the conceptual design report team and we began early discussions on how to create this conceptual design report. After going through several iterations of ideas, we came upon the structure that you will see presented later today by, by Simon. And I greatly appreciate the conceptual design report committee, many I've seen on the call here. So the conceptual design report committee decided that we would have four volumes and we, we nailed down what these volumes would be comprised of. Volume one would be scientific, socioeconomic. Volume two would be, let me go back. Volume two would be machine design concepts. And I should mention the sub-editor Markus Newton for volume one. For volume two, the machine design, we're thankful that we have many accelerator physicists on the team that can contribute, including Durian Bowler, Ricardo Botalini and Christine Darv. I've seen, at least I've seen Ricardo and Christine on the call today. I'm not sure if Durian has logged on. I didn't scan through. We have the scientific capabilities and beamline technique, technical concepts. The sub-editor to, to convene the contributors is Ken Evans Luderoth, and I see him on the call. Technical infrastructure and building design, sub-editor Simon Canal. And multinational project finance and governance con, concepts. Sub-editors Jean-Pierre Azin, Connie McNeely, Simon Canal, Abba Andam and Paul Waffle. And so this is the structure. Now, the, the, my apologies for the slides changing. The, the sub-editors are responsible for issuing the call to contributing writers in the form of white papers and then collecting and convening those white papers into a single voice and a single volume. So we thank those sub-editors. I just want to take the rest of the time that I have, it looks like I have about five minutes left, to really tell why we need such a large effort here. And the, 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 the question that we got at the end of the last set of presentations really indicates that we should really go back over what scope of work we're talking about. And when I introduce this project, I always tell students and faculty who are often from a single institution with maybe a single PI or a, that PI's collaborators, two or three PIs. And then the groups, the students. At PI. Well, the scope of work here is that we're talking about multi-institutions and not just multi-institutions. We're really talking about a multinational effort with many, many PIs and other individuals to make it happen. It takes the political will as well as a financial will. And then when we talk about trainees and scholars, that's the real motivation at the end of the day, is this next generation of scientists who will be able to use a light source like this one in order to make discoveries and affect discoveries that impact us for, for centuries to come. And so I compare this to the Square Kilometer Array project that is only at construction approximately 40 to 80 million. And we're not talking about, we're not talking about the operational cost, so the construction cost. So what are we talking about for the African light source? About 90 to 150 million on construction, depending on its size and capabilities. And I think you'll hear more about that later. And then where would it be positioned? That's the first question I often get in presenting this topic. And the response is somewhere on the continent of Africa. We don't have any specific location that we would like to position it. When, the reason we're working so hard and we think the conceptual design report will be a turning point for a near-term future decisions to be made about the size, scope and where. And then finally, what, how and why, you'll hear about, more about that in this presentation. So I'm probably preaching to the choir at this point with the group of people who have assembled on this call. But I want to point out that of all of this synchrotron facilities. Graphic created by the Canadian. This is a graphic created by the Canadian Light Source. And of all synchrotron facilities, there is none in the continent of Africa, making it the only habitable continent without a synchrotron light source. And the diverse array of the types of research that can be done at a synchrotron light source varies from chemistry to paleontology to new discoveries in protein crystalography and biological sciences to geosciences. And, and so it's really bringing together a diverse set of projects. And as we learned, as we saw with the Sesame Project, which is the synchrotron light source in the Middle East and Jordan, it is also a tool for science as diplomacy. So it really does bring together this multinational effort, bringing scientists together at a, in a single, in a single, in a single facility, working sometimes on the same problem together, but certainly working on the overall benefits. And this is the list of overall benefits. There are socioeconomic benefits. There is boost to the research on the continent of Africa and from the continent of Africa that should share it worldwide. Global, it forms a global research community and positions Africa squarely within it. Because of course, if we have a modern synchrotron in Africa, then we're going to have researchers coming from all parts of the world in order to use that synchrotron. Likewise, tackling diseases that are relevant for the continent. Unique opportunities in energy and environmental studies and so forth. And just building capacity on the continent of Africa. I'll let you read the rest of those comments yourselves. But the other comments I want to talk about is as synchrotron science has grown since 1976, so has the number of publications that, that we see output. And so we're, we're certain going, we're certainly going to, in positioning a synchrotron on the continent of Africa, we're certainly going to increase its footprint in the scientific world in journals such as Nature, Science and other high impact journals. And so finally, finally, I want to end with the World Mapper. And this is a website where you can get data, you can get global data where the continent sizes and the, the sizes on the map are rescaled and sort of a map is distorted to represent the quantity, that particular quantity. So this is a pull down of the World Mapper on science papers published in 2016. And you can see that you need to increase the output of scientific publications on the continent of Africa.
Okay, hold on for a second.
Would you like me to? Okay, and so that was my final slide, besides showing that we have two, two papers, if you want to read more details about the path towards an African light source. The first is called the African Light Source Project and it's a general overview. The second is talking about biological sciences done on the continent of Africa using light sources like the Advanced Light Source and it's in Biophysical Reviews. I thank you for your time today and I would like to take any questions that you may have. Okay, so. I, I'm gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was asking you to stop sharing so that we can see, so I can see.
Okay, stop sharing. Okay.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I don't see any hands. Okay, thank you so much, Tabitha. So next, why don't we turn it over to Marcus Newton, who will give more information on his take on why we need a light source in Africa. Marcus.
Okay, thank you, Sakazi. I will just try to share my screen now. Just a moment. Can you see?
Yes.
Wonderful. And hopefully you can see me as well. Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to thank Sakazi and also Simon and the rest of the AFLS Committee and the CDR Committee as well. So what I want to talk about today is a justification for the AFLS. So I will split this into two sections here. So justification for the African light source and then a justification for the, the CDR as well. So I think once I justify the, the AFLS, it should also help to justify the CDR. Okay, I won't assume very much here, so I will start from the very basics and just explain what a synchrotron facility is. And so of course, this is a powerful source of X-rays, as Sakazi alluded to. We measure this in terms of its brilliance or brightness and measure the total number of photons per second that scatter into a, into an angle, per 0.1% of the bandwidth. And this is typically, this graph here, this graphic will show you basically how this compares to lab-based sources. So you can see the brightness of a typical lab-based source is around 10 to the 10. Whereas a fourth generation or third or fourth generation synchrotron facility such as the ESRF or the Spring A facility has a brilliance of around 10 to the 20. So it's a significantly brighter source, okay? And as you can see here is a picture of the diamond light source. And as was mentioned before, this, the X-rays are generated by accelerating electrons and they wiggle through an insertion device or an undulator and produce these brilliant or bright X-rays. The cost of the facility varies, of course, depending on how many insertion devices and what other features you want to add. As I think Tabitha mentioned, anywhere between, or going from 100 million up to half a billion, essentially, depending on what's included. So what disciplines are represented at a synchrotron facility? Essentially all of them. So I've mentioned just the main headings here. But the science that's undertaken at a synchrotron facility can range from fundamental physics to material science, medicine, studying viruses and all the way on to paleontology and suchlike. So, so a wide range of topics can be included under this umbrella for sure. Okay, I want to just look at a single use case, which is quite pertinent and relevant today, as you all may be aware. And that, of course, is in the region of structural biology. And so it's not, no underst, no overstatement to say, to state that we have benefited considerably from the research that's been done at synchrotron facilities to study the COVID-19 virus and to understand the proteins that are attached to the surface. Much of this work was done at synchrotron facilities, particularly the Shanghai Synchrotron Facility, which you can see in this publication. This is the virus here. Also, it's not limited to, to, of course, COVID. Other drugs have been developed in the past at synchrotron facilities, drugs for HIV/AIDS and tuberculosis and other, other areas. So the structural information will help to elucidate functions. So we use the X-rays to, to illuminate these structures and learn something about their structure and the mechanism of their behavior and then to go on and develop drugs. Okay, so this will allow, if Africa does have a synchrotron facility, it will allow Africa to take ownership of developing their own cures for diseases and to build industries alongside that. And I'll talk more about that very soon. So where can we find synchrotron facilities, as was mentioned previously, all across the world, but unfortunately not currently on the African continent. And so I've got all graphics, all the graphics here for all of the synchrotron facilities that exist. Apologies if I've actually missed one of the facilities here. I think that should be all of them. But it's a shame once again that we don't have a facility on the African continent. And so it's important for us to work towards that goal. Okay, so I want to explain the importance of an African synchrotron facility and how it will help the growing population on the African continent. One way to look at this is to look at the data of the projected growth of the African continent in the next 100 years. And so you can see on the left-hand side here, we have a graph showing the total population, billions. And then the time or the number of years or the year on the horizontal axis. And you can see as time progresses, Sub-Saharan Africa is supposed to increase its population above any other. And so it's going above 3 billion essentially by 21st century, end of 21st century. So that's a massive growth, okay? And if you take a look here on the right-hand side, you can see the percentage of the population in the range of 25 to 64 years. And that's, of course, the working age. And you can see again, this percentage is increasing considerably on the African continent. So we're expecting massive growth in this, in this region here. And so if we're having this much growth, then we need to have capacity to sustain this growth, of course, and to, to sustain the population. There's also another side to this coin, which is the disease burden and mortality currently in Africa. And so if you take a look on the left-hand side here, again, we've got more statistics from the UN. And you can see in Sub-Saharan Africa that the mortality rate, this is under the age of five, is extremely high in contrast to other regions. Okay, so the world is, is sitting at around 38, but Sub-Saharan Africa is sitting at 74. And there are several reasons for this. And so the, the issues there, of course, are quite diverse. And I've tried to capture that in the figure on the right-hand side here, which shows the distribution of leading causes of death in Africa in 2019. And of course, the problems are diverse again, but the leading causes there are again due to disease effectively. So lower respiratory infections, diarrhea diseases, which are due to sanitation typically, AIDS, of course. Stroke, a stroke can be due to several reasons in children, usually medical as well, and malaria and tuberculosis again. Okay, and so these are all diseases that can be tackled or addressed by developing drugs in principle, using a synchrotron facility. Also electricity. So we know that electricity is crucial for poverty alleviation, economic growth, improving living standards. And so this, of course, is also essential. And we can develop technologies for, for producing electricity on the African continent using a synchrotron facility as well. So that's something to be kept in mind or to be borne in mind alongside disease as well. And you can see here the percentage of the population that has access to electricity. The African continent is quite far behind the world average, which you can see here sitting around 80%. So something needs to be done there as well. And there are, of course, going to be diverse solutions to this. And that is, you know, an extensive topic to, to investigate. But there can be contributions from new development of new materials and technologies using a synchrotron to, to diversify the energy portfolio. Okay, so I want to delve directly into the scientific, or sorry, the sociological or societal benefits for having a synchrotron facility. What I've done is I've listed the main ones here, but I've also alongside this put on the right-hand side, their alignment to the UN Sustainable Development Goals, as you can see here. And so autonomy in tackling disease, as we mentioned previously, if we can develop. And so autonomy in tackling disease, as we mentioned previously, if we can develop, if Africa can develop the drugs in-house, they can, of course, have control over this and be able to respond more rapidly to, to outbreaks. Also, food and, and water, which often isn't considered, but a lot of information can be accrued from studying plants at synchrotron facilities as well. Of course, these superfoods, as I've mentioned here, okra, baobab, phony, which you may know, these particular foods are crucial and can be, the agriculture of these particular superfoods, as they're called, can be studied and improved through the use of synchrotron facilities. Science for Peace, okay? So encouraging cooperation between all African countries and through common interests and goals. I will address that again a bit later, but that, that is, of course, going to happen. If countries have to coordinate the development and building of this facility and also access to the facility, then they will draw closer quite naturally. And ostensibly, they will tend to, to work more closely and more peacefully together. Skills development through training, so doctoral training centers should arise as well. As a result of that, beamline operators will have to be trained, of course. Software development as well. There's quite a few operations that are involved in the development of a synchrotron facility. Teacher training, open day visits to the public as well. We should expect that all to happen. And as was mentioned previously, I think by Sakazi, this could also lead to return, to a return of the diaspora, the African science diaspora and those beyond, and reverse the brain drain within Africa. Hopefully also attract foreign investment in the continent. Okay, the economic benefits. So I'm quoting here directly from the director of, the CEO of the Diamond Light Source, who said that for every one pound that was invested in the Diamond Light Source to construct it, it has generated two and a half pounds each year. So each time one pound is invested, two and a half pounds is generated. But the taxpayer actually puts in just under two and a half pounds. And so that simply means that every year, so that simply means that the Diamond Light Source is actually paying for itself. Okay, it's paying for itself through the actual outputs that it produces. So if we look at its engagement with industry, and that's one way which it can pay for itself, it provides access for existing SMEs, that's small to medium-sized enterprises, can cause growth in existing SMEs and development of new industries. And also this can be a catalyst for a Pan-African pharmaceutical industry. So you can see here, this graphic in the center shows the different types of industries that access the Diamond Light Source. This is the synchrotron facility in the UK. And you can see there's a significant contribution from pharmaceuticals. Okay? Also, investment and job creation, so attracting international investment and an uptick in the skilled working force. Okay, so, and of course, finally, the scientific and technological benefits, a boost to African scientific research, so an uplift in research capacity, African science renaissance. So if you do actually have a chance to look at the history of, of science in Africa, you will see that this extends back thousands of years, actually, in various different forms. And so there is a hope that there will be a renaissance in some capacity as a result of this, an increased exposure to, to collaboration with global research, the global research community, and unique African research opportunities. So research opportunities that focus on, you know, science that's crucial or relevant to the African continent. Further skills development in synchrotron and related science, of course, because if there's a facility there, then it's likely more people will conduct research in that area. And as was mentioned, I believe by Tabitha, wealth of publications. Also, if there is an equitable patent system, and of course, there will be a growth, equal growth in the economy as a result of that, because of the knowledge that's accrued and, and retained within the continent. Finally, I hope I've got enough time. Sakazi, please tell me if I'm going over time. But a case study.
Oh, yeah, you're fine.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. So a case study is the Sesame Project, which I think was mentioned a few times previously. And this, of course, has been a force for good. So this is a synchrotron facility which is based in Jordan and was founded, just like CERN, on the vision to increase international cooperation between scientists in a conflict-affected region. And you can see this by looking at the members of the Sesame Project, which include Cyprus, Egypt, Iran, and Israel, Jordan, Pakistan, Palestine, and Turkey. You don't often see those names aligned together in such, in such a capacity. Okay? The vision was first promoted by Abdus Salam to have this facility. And it had three phases of development. So the first was identification phase. Okay, this was back in the eighties. General promotion of vision and search for support, which was completed then in 1999, which went on to then have the inauguration of the Council of Sesame, UNESCO research status, and then construction. And then, of course, it was opened in 2008 and then commissioning began on first light in 2009. And I think there was some discussion by Ian Swainson recently about, just a few moments ago, he mentioned the ICTP training sessions. And so one of the major activities beyond beamtime, of course, is training. And so Sesame is very much engaged in training the next generation of scientists. Okay, so now I've, I've given you an overview of why we need the FLS. And what is the purpose of the conceptual design report? So we want to distill all of this knowledge. So I've given you the various benefits. So societal, economic. We want to then distill all of that into a document so that we can, so that we can present that to the actual policymakers in Africa. So it's a blueprint for the African synchrotron facility, essentially. That's the conceptual design report. And the criteria for choosing the site. So it will be selected based on the criteria of the machine that we ultimately want to build. It will enable Africa to speak with one voice. Okay? I articulate what it needs, when it needs it, and where, where it's needed and why. And then it will have the actual designs of the Pan-African synchrotron facility or design. So typically, there isn't just one design of the facility. There are usually a few of them, a few variations that's given to many people. And then they actually, the policymakers sort of say yay or nay to a particular design, and then it's refined, and then a final decision is made. Okay? So the science case, which is at the forefront of this CDR, will outline the scientific, socioeconomic, educational, and political benefits. We hope it will receive input from as many African scientists as possible, from all relevant disciplines, and also industry and African policymakers. So we hope to engage them very early on. And also international scientists. So if you have a look at the list of the attendees, you'll see that there are several international scientists attending and also on the CDR committee. And we hope it will enable constructive dialogue with its intended audience, including policymakers, politicians, and so on. I've listed them all there. And also the general public. And by that, I mean the general public on the African continent. We want as many people to know, to find out and discover this activity and to have some input so that the African synchrotron facility, once it's finally decided and construction begins or planning for construction begins at the completion of the CDR, everyone has had their say, and it truly does represent the need of the African continent. Okay? And with that, I think I will end and I will open the floor for questions if you have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marcus. Excellent presentation, both you and Tabitha. So are there any questions from anyone or comments? Okay, I don't see any hands. Okay, great. Thank you. So at this point then, we've heard quite a bit about the justification for having an African light source. So now we would like to turn our attention to the conceptual design report and the process that we are using to generate that report. And we hope to have the first draft completed sometime next summer. So to give us more information on the process we are using, I would turn it over to our leader, the great Simon Connel. Simon, take it away.
Hi, Sakazi. Can I get screen sharing?
Lawrence, can you let him share?
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to start with a presentation and then I want to switch to showing you some screenshots. So I have just a few slides. The slides are uploaded and all the links in the slides, you can actually follow and you will need to follow. I think I just want to say at the outset, I'm really happy that we're launching now the official process of the CDR, having, as it has been designed. And thank you to the previous speakers for laying the foundation. But you will have seen that there are five volumes, sorry for the error, five volumes, which each have five editors, and there are 15 lead authors and up to now of the order of 100 authors. And so it's a very, very complex document. So what I'm going to show you is how we're going to manage this document. So the first thing is the AFLS website. I want to show you the AFLS website, which is here. So you can see the first thing on the website is actually this meeting that we have now. And then if you look, there's a item on the website called the CDR. And if you go there, there's an outline of the CDR, the introduction briefly, the process briefly, a summary of the process. The process is managed by a Twiki over here, and then you will find the volumes. And then if we would go to the Twiki, you would then find a fast-changing website with links to each volume. And once again, the process summary and all kinds of information related to that. So let me jump back to my slideshow. So I've shown you the AFLS website and the AFLS Twiki site. A website really is material that's well-formatted and so on. Whereas a Twiki site, we don't care too much that it looks beautiful, but it's highly functional. It's very easy for each and every person involved with the CDR process to contribute to an update within the Twiki. Actually, we don't expect all of you to become sufficiently expert to modify the Twiki, but the volume editors will be competent like that and the lead authors. So this helps the communication within the group and broadening the footprint of authors, the letter of interest, participants, and so on. And also, this is intended for the public to be able to regularly view this Twiki site. And, and also the policymakers. And it will be very explicit how we are moving along. So this is almost like a real-time indication of the progress towards the CDR. Now, once we get to managing the Twiki site and communication amongst the members, we're using an e-group system, which was kindly invited for us to use by CERN. So it's an in-kind support of the AFLS by CERN. So the instructions of how to become a member of the e-group is actually on the Twiki site. And there's too much for me to go in in detail. But if you were to go to the Twiki site, you will see technical instructions for editors, sub-editors, lead authors, authors, conveners. And in amongst here, there are the simple steps for you to put yourself by self-subscription onto a e-group. This is an emailing group. And you will see a number of e-groups for you to add yourself so that you will be regularly mailed. And then it's just like a mailing group, it will enable all the members to keep in touch. So there are e-groups then for all the different aspects of producing the Twiki. So to summarize, we have the AFLS website, we have the Twiki site, fast-changing information. And for emailing each other, we must self-subscribe us, ourselves to the e-groups. And then we have three writing streams, and they vary in level of expertise with technology. So there's a Microsoft Word method one and two, and then a LaTeX method. And now I want to go over the process summary. Okay, so you've already heard from Tabitha that we have volume, chapter, and section, lead authors, section authors, and editors assigned to that. We are still recruiting. You are welcome to volunteer for that. Okay? You can volunteer to Sakazi, and we are still recruiting. So should you want to be part of this serious process of producing the CDR, please volunteer yourself. You are so welcome to Sakazi. We are now at this town hall meeting. The main aim here is to introduce you to the process and issue this call for letters of interest, far and wide to the African continent. It's the diaspora and all friends of Africa. Everyone is invited to submit a letters of interest. The letters of interest is going to come from each of the 55 countries in Africa. Individuals there, be they students, emerging researchers, established researchers, or organizations or groups. Anyone is welcome to submit a letters of interest. Now, there can be many meetings along the way, called by the e-groups within the e-groups. So we expect there will be many meetings. Proceed independently, you know, organize your own Zoom meetings within your own small section of the CDR. And, and proceed and have your meetings. And this is actually already going ahead. And in there, you can make presentations to yourselves about your progress. But one of the main tasks of the volume and chapter editors and lead authors is to gather up the letters of interest, which I believe will number in the thousands. They will gather up these letters of interest and organize them into groups. For example, you may find, let's say, in structural biology, someone in Algeria, then someone in Rwanda, and then someone in Botswana, all want to work, let's say, on malaria and drug development for malaria. And then if we receive such letters of interest which overlap, we will put them in contact with each other and say, you groups are invited to jointly write a white paper on drug targets for malaria uh, using structural biology techniques at a future African light source. And in that way, there will be a group of authors. They're not forced to join together, they're invited to join together. Importantly is, a white paper must emerge. The white papers will be peer-reviewed in the African Science Journal. This peer review means that those authors get credit, as with any journal. And we all want to be recognized individually for our role in the CDR. And the African Science Journal will collect the, the, the papers and publish them in most likely a special edition. And so we will expect then around 100, who knows, 200 white papers that would be very interesting for the CDR. Basically, then editors, lead authors, authors on volumes, chapters, and sections can now use these white papers to produce the CDR. And they can also meet largely in parallel. Finally, it is the role of the editor to complete the entire CDR. And for that, we expect a residence in an advanced study institute model. So we have technical instructions for all of this. And again, it's on the Twiki. I've already discussed it. Please follow these links to inform yourself how to proceed there. Now I want to come to the actual documents. Now I want to come to the actual document submission process. And we've got the simplest way and the next simplest way. And the third way is a way for people uh who have a um a higher level of skill. But if you've got a higher level of of skill, that doesn't mean you write more intelligently, of course. You can have someone using the very simple method, writing absolute gems. So this is no comment on the quality of text produced. It's just to try to make it convenient and 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 have a way for submission for each and every person. So let's say I don't like technology very much. I prefer just authoring and I'm more focused on the content. I just do the simplest way. We've even had a joke, you could write it on toilet paper like Nelson Mandela did when he was on Robben Island. And it became his book, The Long Road to Freedom. And um and so we will even accept text written by hand on whatever you find where it can be legible. Sekazi will be happy to receive it. And you can also just write a Word document and mail it to him. You can you can write it in a text editor. If you don't like Word, you can use Open Office, who knows? But you generate your text and you send it to Sekazi by mail, and that's it. It's as simple as that. The very, very simplest way to get your text is just produce it and get it to Sekazi. Now, the next simplest way, I need to show you um in in another part of our tools. Um, we have a Google Drive. It's public, okay? Uh, there's no security on this Google Drive. And you will find the link to this Google Drive um available to you, to to anyone in the public, but definitely available to you. There's always going to be one part of this Google Drive, which is C D R P D F, and that is dynamically updated by a web robot. You can't edit it, and it will always be refreshed whenever there's a new copy of the C D R. You can um find other material which may be of interest to you. For example, um uh you will find this volumes. And inside this volumes, you will find volumes one, two, three, four, five. You can go in volume one and you will find chapters. And here we ask you to lodge your Word document in the appropriate chapter folder. So it was the 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 public drive and then volumes, the particular volume. And then you could go to the particular chapter. And there you may even see sections. So so this is where you will lodge it. And then um in a in a yet-to-be-published link, you will issue a ticket on a ticketing system. And the ticket will send automatically a email to um the editors who are relevant. And they will set in motion a process where our technical team will bring your text into the automatic P D F that I spoke about, and I'll tell you how that will be done first. But first, our editors get to edit your text. Once they have edited your text, they remove it from this public drive. Your text only remains in the public drive while it is in um process. After that, it will go in an archive section, and you can access it again there too. So 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 you will be able to see. Now, if I just go into this uh C D R, um, I I would I would like to show you that I think, I think currently, um, currently we have eighty-six pages. And um and we have a list of contents, a table of contents should be here. I don't know, maybe I was behind it. Contents. And and then in those contents, there is a whole lot of um volumes, chapters, sections, subsections. So the skeleton of the C D R is already mapped out. This means that, let's say, um, I I've I pick on someone. Um, participant, I want to find a participant. Yeah, here's Christine Darby. She wants to write into this. So she would probably be writing in machine design concepts. And there's a Word version of this document, and she will add her name in red uh at the skeleton. And and then, so so she lodges the document in the in the drive. She submits a ticket and she adds her name in red. And everyone knows she's busy beavering away on that section. Once her documents accepted and edited, that will be changing her name to green, and she becomes a contributing author to that section. And her document get processed further. Okay, so that's all described in the next simplest way. If it was the simplest way, uh Sekazi and the technical team will manually do for you what we've just described there. I I just want to emphasize something. Please, when you name your contribution is volume number, chapter number, section name, your first name, your last name, a version number, and that's it. So that that's how that part goes. Okay, and and I understand the ticketing system is being developed for us by Gihan uh Carmel uh with um kind um offer from Sesame. And so that will be an in-kind offer for from Sesame into this uh process. Now, I come to the responsible author editor way. I apologize if the name means that the others were irresponsible, but this is really people who heavily invested, okay? Um, so they're gonna use a LaTeX mechanism and a GitHub mechanism. And LaTeX is the document authoring system, and it's set to the Springer Book Style. And GitHub is a document revision system. It's actually for computer code, but it works very well with LaTeX partnering. So I don't want to say too much about that because that is very technical. But it mostly will be a technical team backing up, who will convert Word to LaTeX and then store it on GitHub in a code revision system. It will be not possible for anyone to tamper with our C D R or to have unauthorized access to the the pristine volume that is being edited. So I want to show you quickly the the GitHub system. The GitHub system is um here. Uh, one moment while I find it. So so here is our GitHub account. It's got the five volumes. And most important here for you is a Readme. And I'm not going to go through it. As I say, it's technical, but should you want to learn it, you are willing to teach. Um, is all a section on getting started, on style, on your first off Git clone, the layout of the folders, your bibliography, and then the workflow that you will follow. So those of you who would like to participate in this process uh in in this kind of very serious way, you you are you are very, very welcome. And we will train you if you need training. Otherwise, uh you will just proceed. And what I would like to say is there is accreditation here because you would have to go to GitHub and make yourself an account. And then send your account name to Sekazi. See, and if you are authorized by Sekazi and says, no, you are not a hacker, uh then he will tell the technical team to uh put such and such a person uh onto one of the people who can author by GitHub. So then we would have some authors who just write Word, some authors who write Word and store it in the A F L S Google Drive and do the ticketing system, and some authors who use LaTeX and GitHub. In any case, whoever does it, it's only uh Sekazi as overall editor and and the volume editors who can do merges on the GitHub repository. Or everyone who's working on GitHub has to work in their own branch. They can't touch the master branch. Only a joint authorization of a volume editor and Sekazi will lead to a document going into the master branch. Once the document goes into the master branch, uh Marcus has set it up that um GitHub will process it and it will find its way to to um haha, well, uh it'll find its way here. And it's going to become the next version of C D R dot P D F. And so if you if you want to track the progress, you could also always just download C D R dot P D F and you'd always get the latest version. I guess we'll be cleverer and put a date on it or something so that um uh you will easily tell, is it updated or not? And um what else have I got for you? The just for posterity with the slides uploaded, you see how the C D R works and how you get started. And that's it for me, folks.
Thank you, Simon. Excellent, excellent. Um, so I will take any question, or Simon would take questions um from anyone. Are there any questions or comments about anything he has said? Okay, I don't see. Okay, I don't see any in any questions yet. So thanks, Simon. I really appreciate that. Um, so why don't we move, oh, wait a minute, hold on, uh, Fabian, go ahead. Fabian Petit. Uh, you're muted, you're muted though. Uh, Fabian, I think you are, you're still muted if you wanted to say something. Okay, I don't get any response. Okay, so why don't we move on?
Have a question.
Oh, Tabitha, oh yes, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Simon, for the very nice explanation on how to contribute sections. I wanted to know for someone who just wants to contribute a portion, uh very, very brief, maybe one paragraph, is it uh is it suitable to still uh prepare and submit?
I think then they just use the simplest way whereby um they simply mail it to Sekazi. So they they just use the simplest way. And and so all all of this about how you do things, it will be also on the website, but it will also be always on the agenda of this meeting. And I just wanted to say that, you know, in the five volumes, some of them uh lend themselves to the letters of interest method, and others lend themselves to this direct writing method. For for example, those who are talking about governance or the very technical aspects of the machine, uh we do not envisage that there will be a lot of letters of interest there. And those groups are beavering away, and that's why we up to eighty-six pages already. So so um what what will happen is, I would say, for the science motivations, I think that's where we really need the letters of interest. And that's this meeting is especially speaking to the science motivation, people to come up with what science do they want to do? And then solicit the letters of interest there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, why don't we go next um to the governance uh and finance? I don't see Jean-Pierre Ezine here. Um, so hopefully he will tune in shortly.
Ketevi is here, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, right, yes, I know Ketevi is here. We will come back.
Yeah, if if I can, please go ahead because I'm driving. I like my talk, if I can do that, please. Can somebody uh
Okay.
uh move my slide share and move my slide when I when I call.
Yeah, can you keep? Okay, um, did you, did you need to to talk now or did you want, I was gonna put you right after Prosper to finish with the C D R, but you can go now if you need to go now. You need to present now.
I think that's what he's saying. He 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 would like to um to go now, and I will share his slides if you give me.
Okay, great, okay, okay, that that's fine. So so proceed um. Okay, so next we will have Ketevi Asagam, who will be talking about the um big initiative that he is leading called the um strategy, the African Strategy for Fundamental and Applied Physics. Um, so why don't you go ahead, Ketevi? And Simon will share your screen.
It's shared.
All right, uh, thank you, Sekazi. Thank you, Simon. Um, so uh, thank you for the invitation to uh present the African Strategy for Fundamental and Applied Physics. So um I would like to just explain it a little bit, what exactly this uh process is. Um, so the five people that was for you see over there today, Simon, were the one to uh uh discuss it and to propose the process. Uh, but we do need community input. My name is Ketevi Asamagun. Um, I am a research physicist at the National Laboratory. My research is in uh nuclear particle physics experimental. Can we go to the next slide, please? All right, so uh this is the outline that I briefly uh follow. I won't, I will stress. Uh but
We're having, we're having
So, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you, but it's a, there's a, okay, proceed. We'll do the best we can to follow. There's a lot of distortion and disconnection going on, but go ahead. We'll try. Proceed, Ketevi. Did we lose you? Yeah, I think he's traveling. I think he's going through a region of poor reception. Ketevi? Okay.
Okay, um, okay, next slide please. I can, I can hear you though.
Okay, slide three, slide three is here.
Simon, maybe you ought to give the talk because I can barely hear.
Next slide.
Yeah, it's not working. It's not working. I'm honestly, Simon, are you uh Ketevi?
No.
Ketevi? Hello, Ketevi? I think it might be good. I don't know.
Simon should not give the talk.
Oh, he should not, okay.
Okay, to give the talk.
Okay, okay, we will do the best we can to hear then. Proceed.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, yes.
Can you?
Yes. No, it's not working, unfortunately, Ketevi. Ketevi.
All right.
It's not working.
Give a talk myself.
Yeah, yeah, why don't we, why don't you, let's see, if you, if you're you're driving now, we can check back with you later and see if you're in a better area for reception. Because if the reception is just horrible, we cannot, we cannot follow you. Okay, so why don't we, we we will come back to 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 Ketevi. Hopefully, we'll get a better response the next time. Um, so why don't we um go to the governance and finance? Um, has uh Jean-Pierre Ezine online? Uh, Jean-Pierre? No, that's, I don't see him. Okay, let me just say a brief, uh some brief words about the governance of this facility. Now, we now have two multinational um advanced light sources, synchrotron facilities in the world. Um, that's the E S R F, the European Synchrotron Radiation Facility that we mentioned several times, that's located in Grenoble, France. And it's a, as it says, it's a European uh venture sponsored by and funded by a number of European countries. And then we have in the Middle East, the Sesame uh light source. Um, and it's funded by countries mainly in the Um. And it's funded by countries mainly in the Middle East. So we have statutes that have been written that have governed those facilities. And so the African Light Source um is taking those statutes and they have been optimized and they seem to work extremely well. And so Jean Pierre Ezine and his team um is taking that that those statutes and converting them over into a useful document to govern the African Light Source. Um. And just to give you a little bit more detail, the idea that uh we have in mind is for first for the light source to be adopted by the African Union and adopted by the various regional economic communities in Africa, such as on the west side of the continent, you have ECOWAS, which is the Economic Community of West African States. And the idea is in each economic region, the governments involved will choose one of the countries in that region to submit a bid. And those bids will be evaluated by a team from the African Union, and there will be a decision made as to where to cite the African Light Source. So everything we are doing still is completely clear of the politics of where to cite the light source. Um. The African Light Source Foundation is established in South Africa, but that has that does not mean South Africa has any advantage. And as a matter of fact, I think the South African government probably would shy away from being the site because it already is funding a major facility, the the Square Kilometer Array, which would be the world's largest radio telescope system. Um. But anyway, all countries, and there are fifty five countries, I think the number is, in Africa. Yeah. And so all of these countries will have an opportunity to convince its regional um um what do you call the community, its regional community um to to submit a bid. So that's all out of our hands. We're just trying to set up um the the apparatus in order to make that kind of thing happen. And of course, once it's 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 cited, then every country in Africa would be able to be a member country. And that means that every country will have to pay the dues to be determined, to be considered a member. If a country does not pay the dues, the country can only be an observer. And there will be observers from other countries around the world. Um. And of course, you know, whether you're a member or an observer, that determines whether or not you have votes because the light source will be governed by a council and a director general of the council and so forth. But everything will follow along basically the lines of the statutes from the E S R F and Sesame. And most um it will more closely follow Sesame because Sesame has studied the E S R F and it has optimized some things that are more fitting for its region. And we will lean more on the Sesame statute and optimize things for for Africa. But what I've outlined, um, those things are the sort of the basic ideas that will come into play. And we will hope to have involvement by international observing organizations um like the I A E A, like UNESCO and et cetera. So I think that's sort of a general idea of what we are shooting for in terms of governance and and finance. Um. So I'll take any questions you may have about it. Um. If you have ideas about it, we can certainly use your ideas. Um. But okay, I'll open the floor for questions or comments. Okay, seeing none, why don't we immediately move to Prosper, um, Ngabaziza, who is our new deputy chair of the African Light Source Foundation? And I will, he will discuss our upcoming third conference. We've had the one I mentioned, two thousand fifteen in Grenoble at the E S R F. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, we were in Ghana. And now we are going to be having this virtual one coming up, and I turn it over now to my good friend and colleague Prosper.
Yeah, thank you, Secasi, and thank you, everyone, for organizing this event. And my task here is to share with you all the upcoming conference we are organizing uh this year in November. And the idea here is to also convey that for the this initiative or this project of having a light source in Africa, we have been also organizing conferences. And I think it are better and the others have already mentioned that we had the first African Light Source Conference in Grenoble, France, in twenty fifteen. Then we had we had another conference, the second African Light Source Conference in Ghana, in Accra, Ghana, in twenty nineteen. And the last year, we had also a virtual workshop because of the current situation with Corona. So it was a virtual workshop. And this year again, we have the third African Light Source Conference, which will be also a virtual event uh because of the current situation. So I will give for this presentation, I will give some update on the conference. And the way I will do it, I will share the slide that introduces the conference and also go to the conference website to see how things are they will be arranged. So for introduction, uh, as I guess I said, my name is Prosper Gavanzisa. I'm currently based at Max Black Institute in Stuttgart, but I'm originally from Rwanda and I am also a single control user at different control sources. So uh as we can imagine, I think we have already heard from different presenters about the idea of a simple control and also the fact that it's actually a multidisciplinary scientific and industrial infrastructure where we can have different sciences happening there. And we can imagine with such the dimensional uh and the infrastructure, you can have a scientific, no very scientific discoveries, industrial innovations, impact on the society, and also capacity building. And the, for example, if there are different aspects that have been discussed already throughout the this is a different presentations, but the one of the other key elements also that to bring here, for example, is if you look back in different Nobel Prizes that has been awarded, uh, you will see, for example, there are a number of Nobel Prizes that have been enabled by X-rays and even some of them where a single control have been used to get such a discoveries. So our hope in general is hopefully maybe once the African Light Source is already placed somewhere in Africa, who knows, maybe we can even have a Nobel Prize in the some area of science, which is enabled by an African single right source. That also is a possibility that can happen. So then to move on to the point I will focus on for this presentation. So we are organizing the third African Light Source Conference. It will be actually a joint conference where we have a joint conference with the Pan-African Conference on Crystalography and also the African Physical Society. And we have also different conveners that will be to in our 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 conference, our conference. And what I will do for next, I would go to the 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 conference website, try to give some description and also see how what to have on the conference website. So going to the conference website. Yeah, so I hope now you see my screen. So this on the conference website, so the first thing I would like to to highlight is that uh the dates of the conference is uh from fifteen to nineteen November uh this year. And actually, the conference is hosted by the X-Tech Lab from Benin. And I think it's here we elaborate more on the activity of the X-Tech Lab Lab in in Benin. And as I indicated, it is a joint conference where we have the the Pan-African Conference on the Crystalography and also the African Physical Physical Society. And and you have a different convenience who are also going to have a differently topic that will be discussed during the the conference. So the first thing then I would like to indicate is for anyone who would like to attend the conference, who can either join the conference, the first thing is to do the the registration and one can do the registration online. When you go on the conference website and click on the registration, you will get a detail of how you can register. But the first thing will be to create an account on this Indigo Indigo website. So one have to get account, then you can do the the registration. Then in the registration, of course, you have to choose, for example, which track you wanted to after giving you details, the different type, the track you are interested in, whether you are interested with F L S or African crystallography uh conference or African Physical Society or convenience or you want to be part of all of all of the sections. And of course, also you can, once you have been registered, you can submit your abstract on the 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 conference website. Once you are registered, there is also option to prepare your abstract and submit the 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 abstract. And then a we will review the different abstract that you have received. Then from there, we can uh locate a abstract to a specific section of the the conference. So one can visit different track and see all the details of each conference section for the African Light Source. If we click there, we give details of what we are how our our conference is organized and the different topics that we are hoping to cover during the 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 conference. One extra thing also I would like to to indicate who is still on the conference website is that uh our conference, we are expecting uh to also to for researchers or young students or student or area scientists, scientists who would like to have a support for attending the conference, for example, for online data package for attending the conference, there is a procedure also for applying. Then one can, if the application is accepted, one can get that support, then you can uh the follow the conference and present or give poster depending you give a poster if you you will not be able to attend because of the lack of the data to attend the conference. So back now on the on the Yeah, so then back on the on your presentation, the other thing I think I would also to highlight here for the the conference is what to do, one could expect for the this conference. So the first thing to expect is it will be a scientific conference where we have a contribution from different African scientists who are using a simple light sources in in the different fields. We're also having contribution from different international researchers also from different countries who are interested in the effort of who we are of what you are doing to place a secret in Africa. And the the topic that are covered, that will be covered in the conference, they range from different fields for medical sciences, health sciences, geosynthesis, and biometric sciences, energy science, nanosciences, material sciences, mineral sciences, accidental detector sciences, competitive industry, capacity building, infrastructure. And this just to name a few of them, there's a long list of different topics that that will cover in the 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 conference. Another key point also is we have also sessions that are dedicated to strategy and also to elaborating more on the vision towards an African resource. For example, I have some session where we hope to get a a a speaker from what what the four ministers follow, where we have ministers from different African countries having a conversation about this topic of African resources. And also have, for example, so they they invited speakers that include, for example, the Vice President of Ghana for the opening ceremony and also different keynote supporters and keynote speeches from different supporters of this project, of this project. And I think we also elaborate more is on the expected socioeconomic benefits uh for the African light source. So we go in the detail to elaborate what we really expect from the 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 contribution of an African light source to the continent. For example, getting some spin of companies addressing challenges that are especially to Africa. All those topics will be addressed in more elaborated uh ways in the conference. And also we get also extra update on the C D R, the the current status, different people can update on how far they are in different sections, as Simon and Secasi has been describing for the the C D R approach by following to be done. So there for here, the thing I would say is that we are looking forward to have anyone interested in this project to attend this online conference. And if we don't uh for any carriers and starters and students, they are welcome to apply and be able to attend the conference in a more relaxed way. And the lastly, the another point to to point on is we hope uh next year to have
New American one.
First conference that will take place in in Chigali, Rwanda. Of course, that will depend on how the Corona situation will be will be in next year, but we hope by the November, the second, in the week of thirteen to nineteen November twenty twenty two, we have the 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 fourth African Light School Source Conference in Rwanda. It will be hosted by the East African Institute for Fundamental Research, which is located in Chigali, Rwanda. So we hope also to 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 see everyone attending uh the this conference. And the I will finish saying thank you to all of you and we hope to see at F L S three and also at in person conference, F L S four in Chigali, Rwanda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Prosper. Um. Are there any questions to Prosper or comments about what he's said? Okay, not seeing any. Why don't we go on now to another exciting project that's running parallel to the African Light Source? And this is the project called Lamp. Um. We misspelled lamp because we put three A's in it and it's it stands for Light Sources for Africa, the Americas, Asia, Middle East and Pacific. And for that, I'd like to turn it over to my dear friend and colleague, um, Mckelley Zema. Mckelley.
Thank you very much, Secasi. Uh, I tried to share my screen. Yes, you're right in saying we say lamp with three A's. We want to do lots of light. Uh, so, okay, I think you see my presentation now. That right?
Yes, yes, we see.
Okay, yeah, okay. Um, I'm sorry. I think I have a problem with my screen, so, okay. So um let me just, I I think that many of you know about the Lamp project already. It has been mentioned a few times during the meeting today. Uh, anyway, Lamp stands for Light Sources for Africa, the Americas, Asia, Middle East and Pacific. Uh, this is a joint uh project of the International Union of Pure and Applied Physics, the International Union of Crystalography and the Abdul Salam International Center of Theoretical Physics. Uh, you see that our website here, so you will find all the information at our website. Uh, I want to say that uh the Lamp project actually started uh through uh a grant that was awarded to U P A and the U C R uh by the International Science Council, uh that was a three hundred thousand euros grant uh for the period twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen. Um, and it was awarded to a proposal um uh with a full title, utilization of light source and crystallographic sciences to facilitate the enhancement of knowledge and improve the economic and social conditions in targeted regions of the world. Um, so um originally, the proposal was handled by the U P A and the U C R. And I C T P has joined the group more recently, so um after the I S C grant has expired. Uh, but we decided to continue with this very exciting program, project. Uh, so uh we are in a partnership of three institutions now. Uh, as you see from the title and the goal that you can read in this slide, the idea of Lamp is to engage the public and the government and policymakers in discussions about implementing advanced light sources and crystallographic sciences in uh in in all the regions of the world, so that of course would include Africa because the entire continent, as you perfectly know, has no uh facilities uh and the territory. Uh, so the idea is that we should start uh building the users before we build the the facility. We wanted the scientist in We wanted eh, the scientists in the continents to um, eh, to really eh, have a need for, for the facility. Eh, so it's a, it's a complex interplay of eh, you know, science and eh, eh, politics. And eh, diplomatic discussions that we want to facilitate eh, in, in a way. Um, so just to um, show you um, all the people I'm talking on behalf of eh, today. So this is the Executive Committee of Lamp at the moment, it includes of course myself and Sekasi. Eh, eh, Sando Scandolo, eh, Sekasi and I are the co-founders of Lamp. Eh, representing the UCR, AUPAP and ICTP now. Eh, we also have Marielle, eh, I'm not sure if she is talking or Thierry is talking just after me eh, about the XTEC Club. Anyway, Marielle is the coordinator, the local coordinator of the XTEC Club in Benin. And we also have Olskulov Turk eh, originally from Turkey and Chair of the Sesame Users Committee eh, based in Germany now. Eh, in our Executive Committee. Um, but we eh, also have eh, eh, quite eh, very gay eh, eh, mixture of eh, colleagues. Eh, representing the different, the several regions that we are targeting with our lamp eh, project. So we see, you see that we have regional committees for Africa, Mexico, the Caribbean, Southeast Asia, Middle East. And we have just expanded our eh, project to the Pacific Islands. Um, so we are eh, in the process of appointing eh, Regional Committee for the Pacific Islands as well. Eh, we do collaborate with a number of eh, partners in institutions eh, that you can read in this email, in this eh, in this slide. And we also have eh, several partners eh, part- eh, participating advanced light sources eh, that are normally the, the facilities. That would host eh, researchers that we um, eh, support with our FAST team eh, grants. Eh, I will talk about this later on. But eh, of course, we want to concentrate on the African light source and the lamp is eh, eh, is a good friend of the eh, African light source. Is a strong supporter of the African Light Source Initiative. And eh, actually eh, it's eh, it's quite nice for me to um, recall that lamp actually started eh, during the first African Light Source Conference. And workshop in Grenoble eh, that was actually the first time that Sekasi and I and Sando eh, met together. And discussed about eh, proposing eh, a project to the eh, ISC Grants Program. Eh, it was quite natural eh, to meet there and say, okay, AUPAP and the UCR can collaborate on this. Because this was already the aim of both eh, of both unions. Eh, I'm quite happy to see that eh, former President of the UCR, Professor Mavakert is actually online today. And he was a strong supporter of eh, of this proposal eh, as eh, as President of the UCR at that time. Eh, so that was quite successful because eh, after the meeting, the proposal eh, went through and was awarded a grant. So lamp could actually eh, could actually start. And eh, now we are eh, formally eh, joined eh, formally eh, connected through a memorandum of understanding. So lamp and eh, the African Light Source Foundation has signed an agreement eh, to say that we collaborate on capacity building. And fundraising eh, related to synchrotron and X-ray training for Africa. Eh, so you will find this document on the website of Lamp and eh, on the website of the Africa, the African Light Source Foundation. And so going to some of the tasks that we have already achieved eh, in lamp. Eh, we do have published strategic plans for eh, implementing eh, advanced light source facilities in the regions that we are targeting. So eh, this eh, link that you see in this slide, you will find the strategic plans for eh, five regions. Eh, so our eh, advice and suggestions for eh, implementing eh, eh, advanced light sources in these regions. And it's important to say that eh, these strategic plans are actually based on the Universal Grenoble Resolution. That was signed at the first eh, African Light Source eh, Conference and Workshop. Um, second task of lamp eh, is eh, establishing a colloquial program. So eh, sending experienced users and crystallographers to eh, different places in the world. To talk about the importance of implementing um, good eh, scientific infrastructure. Because this would eh, I mean, the, 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 the entire community eh, would benefit from eh, from this. So these are some examples of um, a successful eh, colloquia that we have eh, supported. Eh, you see going from Costa Rica to Rwanda, Benin, the CFiesta was an international event eh, about the crystallographic information framework. Eh, that was actually held in Italy but with eh, students from eh, all over the world. Eh, so this is to mention a few. And eh, eh, one success story that eh, I, I really want to mention is eh, the follow-up of eh, the colloquial program eh, of eh, Thiri. Eh, in eh, in Benin, that actually was the start of the XTEC Lab. And eh, I used to add a few slides about this eh, in my presentations. But eh, Thiri and Marielle or one of, of them is talking just after me about the XTEC Lab, so I'm eh, I'm just leaving this to them. But eh, at Lamp, we are very proud eh, to have been eh, in a sense promoter and supporters of this eh, idea of the XTEC Lab. Again, the XTEC Lab is an important hub for eh, X-ray techniques and crystalography for Western Africa and Central Africa. And eh, it's a eh, it's a, of course, an in-house laboratory, it's not eh, a large-scale facility. But eh, i- i- it actually eh, I, I think Thiri is going to say that it is a feeder eh, of the eh, African light source. Because again eh, we need facilities eh, at all levels for African scientists to eh, to do their science, to do their research. And eh, in the end, actually seek for, for a local eh, regional eh, African light source. Um, third task of lamp was developing eh, a brochure that was already mentioned by Sekasi in his introduction. So we have this eh, this brochure that is entitled Advanced Light Sources and Crystalography, Tools of Discovery and Innovation. It's been edited by Ernie Malamud, Ernie has been mentioned eh, a few times eh, today. And we have versions in English, Spanish, French, Arabic and Portuguese. You can download for free eh, this eh, link, this website eh, or if you need any eh, printed copy, hard copies. Eh, you can just contact our editor, Ernie. And eh, if any copies are still available, he will be happy to eh, to ship eh, over to you. Um, of course, if anyone wants to volunteer translation into any other languages eh, we are happy to, to receive those eh, those translations. And eh, possibly thinking about layouting and editing new versions, they may available, of course, on the, on the website. Eh, probably one of the most important actions of lamp was eh, mobility of researchers. So we have support and then we do eh, we still support eh, teams eh, composed by um, professors and faculty and students. To travel together for a period of two months to one of our collaborative partners, Advanced Light Sources. Eh, and eh, they will spend this period to be trained about the use of synchrotron eh, techniques. Um, so of course eh, we had to stop temporarily this project during the pandemic. But eh, we are starting now again, in particular for the Pacific. But we aim at eh, restarting this eh, this action for mobility of res- eh, of researchers very soon. Eh, hopefully the situation will allow to do, to do this. Eh, so just some pictures from our FAST teams. And eh, again, one eh, success story that we like to mention eh, from our FAST team eh, eh, action. Is that eh, Dr. Kirsty Lawrence eh, and her team eh, were the first users at Sesame. And eh, we are proud that Kirsty was also one of our FAST eh, team back in twenty seventeen and the continuing grant in twenty eighteen. So in a sense, lamp was eh, present eh, at the start eh, of eh, of Sesame experiments. And as I said eh, that the FAST program was suspended during the pandemic. But it was great to have eh, eh, an idea from Tabeta eh, eh, to, to eh, overcome the problem in a, in a way. So this Spark Initiative that she has launched for, and is coordinating for, for Lamp. Eh, Spark stands for Synchronizing Partners to Advance Research Characterization. Is eh, is eh, eh, an action that we are, we have put in place for. And for researchers to send their samples eh, to eh, and eh, these samples will be eh, measured at one of our eh, Advanced Light Source. Eh, participating eh, facilities. Um, so we do have some new initiatives that we want to mention now for the eh, I mean, for the first time in, in our experience at least. We have started um, addressing eh, high school science teachers. So we had a very successful um, eh, program, eh, workshop eh, that was organized in partnership with the Canadian Light Source. Um, that was directed to high school teachers, Sekasi was in charge for Lamp eh, of this organization. I think we had around eh, fourteen eh, teachers from different eh, parts of the world. And it was a good experience and eh, we decided to um, to um, propose the same initiative in eh, different, in different places now. So we are in the process of organizing eh, another eh, workshop for high school science teachers. Eh, this will be at Sesame, it's in collaboration with Sesame and the Canadian Light Source. So we are using the great experience of eh, our colleagues eh, at the Canadian Light Source to put this in place. And hopefully this will be, this will become a series of eh, of workshops eh, in different eh, facilities. Eh, in this case, the problem is of course with time zones. So eh, we are um, accepting eh, eh, applications eh, from high school eh, teachers from UTC plus one to plus five. These will include eh, Africa eh, all Africa is eh, is included. So eh, please eh, inform your colleagues, friends and those who are um, who are teaching eh, science, physics eh, at the high school in Africa. That eh, they could eh, they, they, they can eh, apply to eh, participate in this eh, in this workshop eh, that will be hosted by, by Sesame. So this is a eh, new opportunity for eh, high school eh, science teachers. And again, and eh, staying in the collaboration with Sesame. We are also um, planning a new AUCR UNESCO Lamp Open Lab eh, that eh, would, would be eh, associated eh, with the next Sesame Users Meeting. We don't have a date for this eh, should be in twenty twenty two eh, sometime eh, eh. So eh, we will eh, keep everyone informed about eh, the, the progress of the eh, the organization of this new open lab eh, in collaboration with eh, with Sesame. And eh, so eh, Lamp has organized many eh, events eh, and eh, tried to eh, approach eh, as I said. Um, policymakers and eh, politicians and scientists eh, at the highest level. So you see here that Lamp was present eh, in the World Science Forum twenty seventeen in Jordan. You see here Simon and Sekasi and eh, representatives from UNESCO. Eh, that was the opportunity to launch the African Light Source Initiative to eh, this kind of audience. Eh, so in front of an audience of eh, diplomats, politicians and international institutions. Eh, we also eh, eh, organized a session eh, at the World Science Forum twenty nineteen eh, in Budapest. Eh, and this was where the International Year of Basic Sciences for Sustainable Development was launched. So this was co-chaired by me and Michel Spiro, President of AUPAP. Eh, you see also the Director of ICTP and Sekasi, of course, Princess Sumaya. So eh, we are trying to um, bring the level of the discussion to the eh, to the highest level in terms of eh, diplomacy and eh, policymaking. Eh, but of course, I want to eh, mention our participation in the PCCR two and African Light Source two conference in Ghana. That was a milestone, I think, for, for the African light source. And eh, that eh, was the, the, the eh, place where we could eh, have this connection with eh, the President, with, with the Minister eh, from the government of Ghana. And through him eh, with the President of Ghana. So this is Simon, myself, talking with eh, Minister eh, Frimbo Boateng from the government of Ghana. Eh, talking about eh, the, the, the African light source. And eh, this was the event where eh, the government of Ghana decided to bring the African light source as an official project of the African Union and that was. Eh, okay, this is the official photo from there and eh, you know, a lot of um, eh, publicity about this event in the news. Eh, but now we look forward to the eh, conference that eh, Prosper has just eh, eh, announced. I'm showing here eh, the, the leaflet eh, of the same conference, but down on the side of the Pan-African Conference on Crystalography. I think it's, it's useful for everyone eh, here to know that the International Union of Crystalography is doing eh, is eh, working hard. Towards establishing eh, an associate, an African Association of Crystalography. Eh, so we, we do have a steering committee for the foundation of the eh, African Association of Crystalography. And eh, I'm very happy eh, that eh, there is this partnership with the African Light Source. I think these two institutions can work very eh, closely together, very efficiently together. And so we, Lamp eh, will support, of course, this eh, meeting and eh, look forward to meeting eh, all of you eh, in November. At eh, at the African Light Source Meeting. I think this is all I wanted to say eh, Sekasi.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, excellent work there, Makely. Um, so are there questions um, from the audience or comments?
Yes, because I raised my hand.
Yes, 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 go ahead, Oscar, yes.
Yeah, so I want to thank Michel for the excellent presentation, I really enjoyed. And we at the agency, Afra eh, has a project for promoting nuclear science at the secondary school. And actually, on twenty and twenty first, we will have a meeting. So maybe eh, I will invite you to join, is eh, meeting with physics teachers in the continent eh, to see how we're gonna promote nuclear science. I think this is an opportunity. We have also another meeting with what we call the AfraNES coordinators, who are actually the coordinator for the agency perspective of nuclear institution within countries. So I will like to invite you to join and with Sekasi, I will.
Sure.
So that we can see how we can optimize eh, eh, this program. Because we are trying to provide them some little material that they can use to make experiments as we go. So by, if we team up, we are leveraging the little thing we have and we are together working toward the same thing. So this is what I wanted to mention, Sekasi, and thank you again, it was an excellent presentation and I learned many things.
Thank you very much, Oscar, I think eh, one eh, between me and Sekasi will certainly attend your event on the twenty twenty first, if understand well, just.
Yes.
Eh, yeah, 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 I think it's important to eh, connect these um, eh, initiatives and eh, we can help each other in a sense. So thank you very much, Oscar.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, any other question? Okay, we've gone quite a long time now, it's two hours, we were envisioning eh, three-hour um, town hall. But I think we should take a ten-minute break at this point um, to give people a chance to just stretch a bit. So why don't we reconvene at ten after? So why don't we reconvene at ten after eleven? Okay, thank you.
Is Ketevi around still? Are you still?
Yes, I am here. I am home now.
Okay, all right, cool.
So I can go whenever. Now I have a good internet.
Hey, it's great that you have now a good internet, Ketevi. And we look forward to your contribution.
Recording in progress.
Hello, Thierry, are you there? Marielle, are you there?
Sekazi, I am now home and I am connected.
Oh, great. Okay, definitely. So I will go back to you. We just had a presentation on LAMP. And out of the LAMP project came the XTEC lab. So I think it's natural to pick up with that next. And then we will take you right after the XTEC lab. And then we will be ready for questions and answers. So yeah, it's, it's good you got home. Okay, that's great. Because I don't like talking to people when they are driving. At work, all the time you're talking, I'm worried about you on the road, driving and talking. And isn't that good? In fact, that was.
That part was fine. It was just the connection. That part, you know, now there are also gadgets. You can set up your iPhone on a dashboard and.
Yeah, no, but your, your, your brain, your attention is diverted. So that's, that's what I, hi Thierry, how are you, sir?
I'm fine. I'm fine, Sekazi.
So you, are you in Benin right now?
Currently, yes.
Yeah.
When?
Okay, yeah.
Just a few weeks ago, because there is a lot to, to do here. So, yeah, so I tried to split between my duties and commitments in France and what I have to do here to keep things going.
Well, you're a busy man, international man.
I don't know. I have to profess.
Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll give them another minute or two. I see most people seem still to not be back. And we will start at eleven twelve. Yeah, we, we went kind of long. So are things working out in terms of your discussions with Semi City?
Yes, it's, it's working out. We were discussing the budget the last two weeks. And actually, we managed to secure quite some funding for the next, the next set of equipment.
Great, great.
We have to. And it's always a very challenging.
Yeah, no, no, but you've been successful. Yeah, you're a lot like Jean Pierre. He's able to get all kinds of things funded. So you are just, you're quite like him. That's amazing. Well, keep up the good word. Marielle, are you there? I see she's not, I see her name there.
He's there. She's, her office is next to mine, so.
Yes, hello Sekazi.
Oh, hi.
Everyone, yeah. How are you?
Oh, doing pretty well. So I think you and, and, and Thierry, so Thierry will, will give the presentation presumably.
Yes.
And okay, great, great. Yeah, great, okay, okay. So great, thank you. So we've heard now about the LAMP project from Mickelli. He gave an excellent presentation and he mentioned that one of the tremendous outputs from that project is the XTEC lab. Because Thierry was our colloquium speaker that LAMP sent to Benin. And the president there was so fascinated about what he was saying that he decided to put his money where his mouth is. And so the government funded this beautiful XTEC lab project. So I'll turn it over now to Thierry to give more details.
Thank you, thank you very much, Sekazi. And hello, everybody. I'm pleased to be here to, to share the XTEC lab experience with you. The talk given by Mickelli earlier is an excellent transition to my own, my own talk. And for some reason, I can't share my screen. Why is that? It's telling me that.
Okay, Lawrence, can you give Thierry permission to share? Lawrence, are you there?
Yep, 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 I'm just, I am looking for his.
You don't have my, my slides.
There you go.
Okay, good. Okay, so I'm going to share my screen now with you and, and talk about the XTEC lab, the XTEC lab initiative as. Just a second. Okay, good. As Mickelli mentioned, this is, this, this is a result of, of the direct result of the LAMP colloquium program in twenty eighteen. And it really gives you an idea of what happened when determined people collaborate together. You will see that things can happen quickly. Okay, a few things about the context motivations. I will then discuss the goals and our little achievements to date and, and the prospects. So as Mickelli mentioned, I was here in twenty eighteen, I think it was in May. And it was part of a dissemination program towards, that was targeting universities and institutes various different places in Benin. And that's how it happened. I was called later on to give a presentation at the presidency of Benin. And the government of Benin decided to fund a platform that later called XTEC lab, because the initial name was XTEC SD, because we wanted XTEC and sustainable development. Because as you will see, our fields of applications are really focused on the issues that we're facing in various fields, agriculture, health, environment, environmental science, energy, and so on. So Benin is, so that was a huge success. I'm putting the map of Benin here so that you can see where we are. It's a little country between Nigeria and Togo. And Benin is a country, is one of the ten countries that suffers the most from the brain drain. You will see people from Benin across the world, in all kinds of fields, including medicine everywhere. I think even twenty years ago, we had more medical doctors from Benin working in the Paris region than we had in the whole country, which is, which is very which is not normal, actually. So that was a huge success. And later on, the collaboration between the land, which Sekazi already, Mickelli just presented, and the government of Benin happened through the SEMI City project, which is the city, the international city of innovation and knowledge. I'm talking you, I'm talking to you from our first campus within Cotonou. It's a beautiful building. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, you were not able to see it last, last year because we had to organize the third XTEC lab session in a hybrid mode remotely. But most of the students were present here in Benin and the experts had to teach from their, their home countries. So this platform is primarily dedicated to the use of x-rays to kind of tackle issues that are specific to our continent. So it's, I think it is the expression of a very strong commitment from the government to support education and training in various areas, but especially in the STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Right now, there is an unprecedented effort to really invest in practical training and professional training to boost the, 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 the capacity building in, in the country, especially in the field of science. And I can tell you that to date, the government has already invested more than one point seven thousand, one million and seven hundred thousand US dollars in just the XTEC lab project. Through infrastructure, we have a building that is next to, to the first campus. It's, it's called the Scope SEMI City Open Park, which houses the XTEC lab installation. So a building with an area of more than four hundred square meters that is dedicated to the XTEC lab activity. So we have two labs. One is the, is the x-ray diffraction lab and one is the imaging lab, mainly microtomography. So we already have equipment such as a single crystal diffractor. So thanks to Mickelli, we managed to secure the delivery of the purchase, at least of a second diffractor, which will be a powder diffractor. And we just got granted for the microtomograph that we are now discussing with Brueker. We do have a cryogenic system. Again, Mickelli played an important role with the company called CryoStream in Oxford, I think. So we have a cutting-edge equipment and the next steps will be for us. And I will talk, I will talk about this a bit later to extend our activities to other applications, but let's not go too fast. The government also funded XTEC lab by recruiting five full-time people. We have two research scientists, Marielle Agbanbata, who is the XTEC lab coordinator, and Sidwan, who is also a chemist, like, just like Marielle. These are two young, bright scientists that are really managing the platform. And we have three support staff also. So these are full-time people who work for the XTEC lab. So just a few words about SEMI City. We, really, the ambition of this project is really to host one of the premier innovation hub in Africa, the African continent. So it's, really, the idea is to promote a knowledge-based economy and advance the concept of innovation made in Africa. So that's why you will often see IMA, which means Innovation Made in Africa. Find solution, design new solution for African problems in Africa in order for them to really match the needs that we have here. Because most often, things that are important just don't. Because most often, um things that are important just don't really work. We have to adapt many of the solutions, the so-called solutions that we imported here because they don't they don't work. And the idea is to put people really in charge of their own finding solutions to their own problems. So there are three pillars is education, research and entrepreneurship. Uh X Tech Lab is in fact uh one of one component of uh between five platforms that we have here. We have a platform called Tekima, which is also in my department as a head of uh the Education and and Research Department. Tekima is very interesting. I would like to say a few words about it because it's it's somehow connected with the activities of X Tech Lab. So it's a place where people can come, uh people from various backgrounds can come and mingle together and 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 discuss and and find ways to uh come up with a new solution that individually, if they were just on their own side, they would not have necessarily thought about. So we mix people from various backgrounds. We have craftsmen in the field of wood, the plastic, textile, metal. We have researchers. We have a entrepreneur come with their needs and what they would like to for us to 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 come up with. And we are actually working on 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 putting together and setting up uh uh a world-class makers or fab lab because we use um 3D printing to to fabricate various objects that are currently needed here. I will give you just one example. You know, some of these processes that you use for in in medicine can be made this way because the ones that are imported do not um always fit the morphology of the African people or the African women. So most of the time, uh they have to change this and keep making various surgical intervention operations to change the the device. So the idea is to make them here and so that they take into account uh all the various aspects of of the morphology of the local people. And we have the Tinima, which is Tekima but for a younger public. And this targets people between eight and eighteen. And we have a a lab that is dedicated to the sustainable habitat. It's some sort of research center to come up with new solutions in recycling, material design. As you know, Africa is now uh is has has a very fast-growing population. But this fast-growing population is mainly urban. So it's cities and around the cities. But the way it's growing now is kind of uh very, it's not organized. So we have a population that is growing with huge difficulties, hu- huge issues uh for transportation, recycling, sanitization. So all this is um is a reason why this component of the scope, the scope was created. And of course, you had X Tech Lab. And we also have a studio, which is called IMA Studio, um which aims to design um or to to make different um uh contents for like we, one of our program now is to 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 design um a virtual lab that we can use for uh teaching practical practical courses. Because the access to lab equipment is not always granted. So we want to um reach as many people as as we can. So the idea and we're working on it now and it's one of the exciting projects that we have now is to design a platform that is versatile enough to be used for various practical teachings. It's a lot of work, but we, some collaborations are on the on the way with with various partners across the world. So as I said, X Tech Lab is a regional training platform dedicated to the use of x-ray techniques. I really want to emphasize the the term regional. If this was just meant for Benin, I would not have uh got involved in this. Uh one of my conditions when we started this was this, that I wanted the facility to be open to all Africa. And 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 this this seems to work because since we started uh in twenty nineteen, we had about eighty-four people trained from mostly, of course, from Benin, but also from various other countries. I will show you a slide on later. The idea is to provide a hands-on experience with the use of modern equipment. Um Marielle can testify about it. She, I think she made her, she she conducted her thesis work here in Benin. But just to have one sample characterized, she had to send to 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 send it to Europe I don't know, America or Asia, and wait few months before getting a structure sold. So this is something we want to 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 mitigate, at least for the population of students that we can reach here. So the platform is open to them. They can come and characterize their equipment, analyze their data and get some support from the staff of the X Tech Lab. That's why it's important for us to train that staff and to have people who are expert really in their fields. And I would like to, by the way, thank uh again Mickelli for um helping with the training of Sidhu. And I would like to thank again um Marcus, Marcus Newton, who really offered to to host Sidhu for a few for internship of a few months to to have him trained with synchrotron techniques and and various different x-ray, x-ray techniques. We secured the the money for this training program now. So uh when uh they will lift a bit these all the the restrictions with traveling, travel ban, especially in the UK, I think Sidhu is almost ready to go. So, um but do not forget that X Tech Lab was um a project that was originally supported by the Lamp. So our ambition is really to make this platform a feeder facility for the so for the the future light source, African light source. And we would like to encourage and to help to contribute to the emergence of a community of experts who will contribute to the African light source project. Uh the training itself is based on three tracks. We have, of course, crystallography and mostly x-ray diffraction. I prefer to say x-ray scattering because it's not only diffraction. Um and Mickelli and others are involved in that program by providing expert who come here. They were here twice in twenty nineteen, but in twenty twenty, due to the pandemic, we were not able to have them in presence. Hopefully, next year, we'll resume our uh bi-annual training sessions. We have another track that is very dear to me. It's math, math engineering and x-ray imaging. Because this is a result of a strong interaction with myself and some colleagues from uh from mainly from France, from Econormal Superior, who are expert in using math tools to extract a lot of information from images. So we call it image correlation. So we have somebody whose name is François Yl, who is professor at Econnormal Superior. And we have somebody else whose name is Dominique Jolain. He's one of the world experts in using uh math, combining math with uh some other, some other tools to extract morphological parameters from any image. So we came together with Alain Fangier from the CERA and 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 designed this program, which combined x-ray imaging, so topography, first of all, to the imaging. And then we can make a a 3D reconstruction of the object. And then these mathematicians, they do amazing things. They are able to extract all the parameters and all the morphological parameters, the size of the grain, their orientation, the space between grains, the the you know, it's it's just incredible the amount of information that we can extract using the data. And then we have a a third contribution from a good friend of mine, whose name is Thierry Duvo, Professor Thierry Duvo from University of Reims Champagne-Ardenne. He's one of the very good experts in uh in thermal, thermal science and thermal mechanical engineering. So we are now putting together, setting up a third track of our program, which will uh familiarize people with the basics of thermal uh the the methods, heat conduction, measurement, heat transfer and also simulation. Because um some of you may know that uh using simulation tools here is not very current because it takes a lot of uh of computing power. But we just had our first super calculator built in at the IMSP, Institute of Mathematics and Science Physics. So the idea is to have a partnership with them so that we can run our calculations there. So that's X Tech Lab. So training, I resume, I summarize. Two annual sessions of fifteen days each, bringing together students, researchers from Benin and the rest of Africa. So each year around and an intensive program that is centered on the use of x-ray techniques. Scattering, imaging, spectroscopy next. So to date and despite the pandemic, we've been able to um train eighty-four people from twelve African countries with the participation, active participation, I would say, of twenty-two international experts from around the world. So the research does not, so the training lasts two weeks and it's twice a year. But the research goes on um around the year. And basically, the the model we found is the scheme is that people build some sort of collaboration project with the supervisors and they can continue their work uh in between the sessions. So uh but we focus on on our priorities, of course, health. So we have various subjects. Uh you will see one example in pharmaceutical research. So water sanitization, characterization of wood species and eco-materials. So there are already some publications that uh came out in in good peer-reviewed scientific journals. And Marielle has been very instrumental in building a program to scientific popularization through um a scheme that intend to make a high school student and 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 students from universities aware of the many application of of x-ray science. But not only, we are now working on a program, and I will say a few words about it later, to also do the same thing for nuclear science techniques. And this is uh is available and will be available in the format of practical training, practical tutorials. And I would like to mention that in twenty twenty twenty, uh crystallography lessons, practical lessons were reintroduced for the student of the first and second year of physics chemistry, the physics chemistry department of the faculty of Abomeka Lavi, Donkey Uwesu Mesi, for the benefits, the benefit of more than one thousand, more than one thousand students. And I would like to give all the credit to Marielle and Sidhu because they did an amazing work for that.
So. And you, Tieri, can you conclude in another couple of minutes?
Yes, I will, I will. I would like to just mention that the X Tech Lab program and and more generally, all our programs um uh target a deep, a very diverse audience. As I already said, that we have people from different backgrounds. So so far, we had some interesting achievements that I already mentioned. I like this picture because this is the first molecule that was that was entirely synthesized and and solved in Benin. And it has some potential for treating maybe some neurodegenerative diseases. Uh these are the the papers so far. One paper is in the pipe now, is being reviewed. And it's on the one of our main wood species that we have here, thick wood. So I will be published, I think, in the next few weeks. And and that's it. Uh I was saying that people come from various countries. Here are the countries here, Ethiopia. And we try as as much as we can to have a gender balance. We encourage women to apply for these sessions and their application is is prioritized most of the time. And it's inclusive. You have people from twenty-three to fifty-one who were able to to get trained. So thank you. Uh just one thing, the funding, uh it's one of the biggest challenges that we have. The 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 equipment also. Uh right now, as I said, we are including the nuclear science program within the framework of the National Program on Nuclear Application in partnership between the IA E A and the Benin government. And there is a document that is being uh that is being written now. And hopefully, by the next year, we will have this program up and running. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation, Tieri. We really appreciate all the hard work that you, Marielle, Sidhu and the rest have done, Mickelli, to make this a reality. So are there any questions to uh Tieri? Okay, I'm looking to see. I don't see any hands up. Okay, so next, why don't we go back to um the African strategy, physics strategy that's led by Keteve? And he is at home now, and so his reception should be pretty clear. So I will turn it over to you, Keteve.
Uh hello, Sekazi and the organizers of this event. Uh thank you very much for the invitation and um my apologies that I wasn't able to connect at the time when I was expected. Um okay, nevertheless, I am going to take this few moments to uh um tell you a little bit about the the African strategy. I first want to say that this is not a permanent event, so it's not a it's not something, it's not a research infrastructure. It's not something that is expected to to stay forever. Um it's strategy, it's basically a development of roadmap through uh community input and consultation. Um it has been, it's been done in Europe, in the Americas, Asia, where grassroots community discussion, discussions take place. Um people have their own competing ideas of what is important for the region. Um you know, in the in the particle physics community in Europe, they debated which accelerator should be the next one to be built. There were different studies of different kinds, linear, secular accelerators and so forth. And then they presented their findings through the strategy and and then the community decides what is uh the roadmap. Um in the US, we are currently involved in developing the second version of the particle physics strategy for the for the United States. I am convening one of the groups during in that strategy called Community Engagement, which has a lot of activities in there. Um so then we thought about, you know, what if we start a grassroots strategy in Africa? So like I said, it's a community discussion. Um people may have different views, people may have different interests, but we would like to hear everything, whether the arguments, whether the pros, whether the cons. You know, what is the long-term impact? All that stuff, we want to write it down. So everything um in the development of strategy is welcome. And it's not necessarily in support for any particular ideas or any particular development. So um the way it started is that one of the our colleagues in Europe contacted me. So the way it started is that one of our colleagues in Europe contacted me at some point and said, hey, look, even Latin America is now developing the first strategy, you guys in Africa, what are you doing? So he posed that question to me. So I started thinking about it, so I went to these four other people and said, hey, guys, can we organize ourselves, can we start organizing our community? So we put ourselves into a steering committee, so that's how it started. And then we started a broad consultation. So I've said a little bit about the motivation, motivation so forth, and the steering committee. I will say a bit about some of the other stuff that are listed here. Yeah, so like I said, it is an engagement, a discussion, studies, opinion. You know, some of them may be differing, some of them may be in complete opposition, but it's a scientific discourse, therefore, we want to hear everything. Yeah, so that's what this strategy is about. And we like this thing to be Pan-African, and we like to be open to all. As I think all of us, we have a good idea of what we believe is good for Africa, what the future should be. And that is our common interest, but how we get there may be different. Through the strategy, we want to hear all of that without excluding anything. And then we want to synthesize, summarize it, then pass it on to the politicians, and then they can decide where they want to put money. That's how it happened in Europe, that's how it happened in Americas. It doesn't necessarily have to be the way it happens in Africa, but those are the precedencies that we have in terms of how strategies are executed. So we have from a structure, which is what you are seeing over here, we have an international advisory committee, you know, we have a committee of observers and working groups and so forth, and we try to find people to convene those groups, and all of that stuff is still in process. You will notice that some of these things are parallel with what the African Light Source is doing, because Simon has his feet on both sides. He's, I don't know how he do it, he does it. I've been working with Simon for over twenty years, he just, you know, he does so many things. All right, so here is our main website. You will see here at the top, there is a call for letters of interest, you hear that from Simon in terms of the African Light Source. Here, this call of interest is very broad. It's not just things related to light sources. You will see, for example, in the left column here, that we have twenty-two working groups here. There are physics groups, and then there are also what we call engagement groups here. So this call of letters of interest here is for anybody to submit their intention or whatever they think they believe is good for Africa in any of these categories. The letters of interest are people's opinion, it's not wrong, it's not right, we're not going to judge it. We're asking for something for no more than two pages. It's not going to be published. It will only be accessible to this working group for the purpose of developing what are the major ideas in those working group. What are the, what the people are thinking should be, what should be developed in those working groups. That's the purpose of the letters of interest. That's what we call the community input. And we would like everybody, all of you connected here, to engage in this process. I have my own projects in Africa, I run the African School of Physics every year. That is my baby, that's where I spend my time on, what I spend my time on when I think about what I want to do for Africa. Some of you are doing that for the African Light Source. Nevertheless, I call upon you to really engage in this process of the African strategy, because it is not a process supporting anything in particular, but it's a process of discussing broadly and presenting our opinions of where African lead development should be going. Okay, so you may submit it in your favorite projects, like the African Light Source, in addition to what you are developing for the African Light Source right now, that Simon mentioned. It's not in opposition, because like I said, we all have our own projects already going on. The strategy is to bring all of those things, shake everything up, and then say, okay, this is what the community is saying, but we are not seeing that we endorse that. Because what happens is that when you write now a strategy report as a physicist, you don't have the money to support any of those things. Politicians will have to do it, and they will always put less money than what is required, so they pick and choose. And then what happens is that you have to repeat this strategy again, you know, very often. So this process may be repeated again seven or ten years later. It will not be led by me, it will, hopefully, other young people will come into the process and do it. So that's why I'm saying that what we are doing here is not something in it is permanent. It's not to propose any particular preferred direction of any of the five of the people or anybody engaged in here. And after a few years, this process will terminate with a report. And then ten years later, people may come and say, okay, fine, let's redo this strategy. Let's see what has been accomplished, which part was done, which part was not done. What are the new things that we should revise or we should add? That's how it happens everywhere else. So one of our objectives is that if we get the African scientific community to just engage in the process of that vast group, vast group discussion, we will have achieved something. Because it's happening in other places of the world. Latin America just did it, they completed a strategy report after ten years of talking across the Latin American countries. Yeah, if we do that in Africa, then everybody is talking that what is good for Africa, we hear everybody's opinion. We establish, we establish a culture of engaging in that process. Even if the report is not fully implemented, at least the exercise of doing it becomes a part of the scientific discourse of the African community. That in itself, for me, will be an achievement. So that's why I call upon you to come, you know, first discuss within the African Light Source what you want to do. That's very good, I really support that. But come also into this process and express your opinion, even if it is not in light source, it may be in education, it may be other, you know, outreach, other areas. Express your opinion of what is important for Africa. I really call upon everybody engaged here, tell other people about it. It's not to replace anybody's favorite project, but we want to talk and we want to write down what is emerging from our discussion, without necessarily being against anything. So you can see all of these working groups here. We have a working group in the light sources. When we come here, I would like to say you can see the people that are the conveners here. But as a convenor, we call upon these conveners to be, you know, open-minded and very broad. I know that all of these people are involved in the African Light Source. But let's say somebody comes with another idea, that they want to do something else related to the light source, but it's not the African Light Source. We call upon these conveners to listen to it, to be really neutral, because that's the process we want. Yeah, and collect that information. Let's say somebody come and submit the white paper and say that I want to write up white paper on a completely different idea. It's not the, it's not the light source as you guys are discussing. These conveners should listen to it, because we want to listen. Doesn't mean that, you know, collecting the intentions and the white papers doesn't necessarily mean that any one of them particularly is the direction. But the process of listening and collecting that information, encouraging people to develop the ideas, whether even if they are against what is our own ideas. That process, we want to establish that culture. Because I have been in the European strategy, and I see the debates of circular versus linear colliders, different types, working groups. People have, were very, very motivated in their belief of what they think the future should be. And they have the physics argument. But at the end of the day, everybody was able to talk, they were able to present their ideas, and they were able to write the reports of all of the opposing views, and they were able to present it to the community, and then some consensus emerged. And that is remarkable, that's what I would like to see for Africa, that's what I would like to see for ourselves. So when you go to this website, you will see also various working groups have started working. And so there is already, you can see a calendar of events coming up, all that stuff. I won't go through everything. We have, you know, an advisory committee, we have a list of endorsements already, including the African Academy of Sciences, all of those things are coming together. We are the point of now asking for the wide community input in terms of the letters of interest. Okay, which I believe you are also doing in the African Light Source. Yeah, but like I said, the light source that we have here is more of the infrastructure. The accelerator, the service, to provide that service for the community, people come and do their research. You can see that we have other working groups here. If your research is in material physics, you will likely submit your white paper in condensed material physics, but specifying that you need a light source to be able to do that research. Now, if you are an accelerator, of course, you also, the light source also needs an accelerator component. So they are.
Keteri, can you conclude in the next couple of minutes?
Okay. Yeah, sure. So, so this is, this is what, this is what we have in the strategies. So our job will finish in two or three years with a report, and then we will disband, this entire working group will disband. And we will submit that report to all of our advisory committee and all of our, you know, institution endorsing us, and then our job is done. Whatever they do with that report, which project they will support, where they want to put the money, now it becomes politicians' problem, and we may also play in that politics, yeah. But that's what the strategies means. And then, like I said, ten years later, other people younger than me may come and redo the strategy. And I hope they do that, because then we establish the culture of doing this thing periodically as needed, just like it's been done in other parts of the world. So you mightn't see any of these as against the light source. Like I said, I have my own project in Africa, but I'm still engaging this strategy. If somebody comes and says that they need some other school in Africa that is different from the African School of Physics, I am willing to listen in the context of this strategy, they need to write it down. What is their objective, what is their motivation, what's the impact of that school, what is their vision? We want to hear it, okay? So I hope you would not only submit your white papers in the African Light Source, but you come over here also and submit letters of interest, white papers, disseminate the information. Let's get the entire physics African community talking and developing the roadmap in all of these areas, just like it's being done in other parts of the world, but applied to our African reality. I'll stop there.
Thank you, well said, Keteve, extremely important. And it's so great for me to see you doing all of these great things. I remember when you were just a post-doc about twenty-five years ago. And we worked together on some experiments at Jefferson Labs. So it just brings tears to my eyes to see so much great work you're doing on the continent, so keep it up. Okay, any questions to Keteve? Okay, if not, we're going to go into questions and answers. But before we do that, we mentioned earlier that our big conference that's coming up is going to be joint with the Pan-African, African Pan-African Association, as well as with the African Physics, Physical Society. And Amadou Waigaye is the president of the African Physical Society, and he's here. Do you want to say something about the African Physical Society part of the conference, Professor Waigaye? Let's see. Okay, Tabitha, you have a question?
I have a question for Keteve, I was just a little slow in finding the raised hand function. Thank you, Keteve, very, very nice talk, and thank you for the involvement, I'm able to participate on the project. My question is about the feedback. So when do you, let me rephrase it. Is it fine for the ideas that fall out, that related to light sources to fall outside, that fall outside of the African Light Source? Is it fine to feed back that information to the A F L S group and the A F L S Steering Committee, say this group? And do you want, so, so do you want that information kept? Or is it okay to immediately feed that back? That's my question.
Yeah, no, I think, I think the feedback is important. So if, if there is, you know, any information that is useful for the development of the African Light Source, of course, it should be, should be fed back. I think that's, that's, that's the way it should, it should go. You know, in the development of this strategy, we're going to have to make a list of what we believe, you know, priority list of what the African policymakers should be focusing on, you know. I know that is political in some areas and things like that, we're going to have to make, you know, that type of, that type of list. And I think having, African having a major research infrastructure is, I think, is really, is important, yeah, to have. So I believe that if there is anything that we find in the development of the African strategy that is useful for the light source, it should certainly be fed back. And there are already a lot of you who are involved on both sides, so that should be fine.
Thank you, that's why I wanted to ask, make sure that as I went back and forth, that it was, it was valid to do so, thank you.
Okay, great. So at this point, I think I will turn the floor over to Simon Cornell to entertain any comments or questions by anyone. Simon.
Uh huh, okay, thank you, Sekazi, I think it's been really a wonderful afternoon. I didn't get to point out to you that if you would want to submit a letter of intent, you could do it at also a website. And it's a special place for harvesting such letters of intent. So if possible, could I just take one minute and show this website, Sekazi?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to share. So this is also a site that's advertised in the slides I presented. It's an Indico page that we're using to collect these abstracts.
It's also on the flyer, Simon, it's also on the flyer.
It's also on the flyer. So you would come to this site, and you would see there's this call for abstracts, and it's from tenth of September at the moment to thirty-one of January. But I'm not sure if we may extend that date or not. And you would simply click on submit a new abstract. Please use the word abstract instead, instead of letters of interest, we can't change that word. And then you will see this progress bar going towards the submission deadline and some instructions on how you will submit a new abstract. There's just one test abstract in so far, but if you did submit the abstract, then this window would pop up. And you could enter a title, and you could enter some text. And, and then you could put yourself as an author. So you will have had to have logged in or become accredited on this. logged in or become accredited on this page. You could put yourself as an author. And over here, you could, you could add a, a I did have something ready here. Yeah. You could add a written submission like that. This is a test. And then you would, you would have to also, you would have to also say what volume you wanted it in. So you would say, I want it in volume three and of that volume, I want it in chapter four. And if it's appropriate, you would say in section two of that. And then you would simply click submit and your entry would be submitted. You could always come to your own letters of interest that you had submitted and edit them further. And this is our collection point then for the letters of interest. So this, this harvesting site is, is available to you on the link. So I just invite you to use that. So I think you've heard so many fantastic presentations. I, I would like all the presentations to be uploaded to the Indico page. Two are there so far. And then everyone can get them. I've seen in the chat, people have asked about the presentations. So you are really welcome to it. And also we'll put the recording of this session up there at the end. Okay. So that being said, please feel free to raise your hand or type something in the chat.
Oscar, you have a, Melis has a question.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you, Sekati. Actually, my is not a question, a comment for, for, for Simon. Again, I want to thank the team for organizing this town hall. It was very instructive for me and my colleagues here at the, at the IAEA. And, and actually, my question is that we've been considering these days to, to build up a partnership with the ESRF between AFRA, which is the African Regional Cooperative Agreement for Research, Development and Training Nuclear Science between the AFRA itself, the IAEA, the Light Source. And, and, and I think an ESRF, because the idea is actually to come in support, what you're trying to see, to build up a case so that the agency can support the capacity building part. Because as you mentioned, and the things, we are not going to build up the capacity, the human capacity once the second throne is there, we need to build up the capacity. So that by the time when people understand, they can, then maybe do better, a little of interest because they know what the secretary can do. My discussion with colleagues and other people around was that, because people did not know what the secretary do. It was difficult for them to understand the importance of this, this initiative. And I would like to thank Markus for the presentation because it made it very clear to some, some colleague who already have received feedback. Because now they can see, including the people of the AFRA committee who are here today, why is it important? So mine is just to say that we have to get, we will have another meeting probably with, with Ed. I saw Ed is here. With the Light Source Foundation, with the AFRA people, some of them are here today. The IAEA to see how we can make sure that we, we can have a partnership where human resource and this capacity building is organized so that we can provide support in a more sustainable manner. Because I saw that Michele mentioned some of the support they are providing already. So if you come in support and we literally put it in certain framework, we will be together stronger to support the initiative. So Simon, that's what I want to, to, just to say. Thank you.
Oscar, it's so welcome to hear that and also to have your participation. I really want to thank you and your colleagues from the IAEA that are participating. And, and I'm really glad that you found that there was material here that was helpful. And we'll definitely follow up in aside conversations with you on that. And I, I know it's mostly Tepo Ntsuane who, who is leading that for us and you will know him as well. So, so he will convene us and we will continue that conversation.
Okay. Any more question? I think it's been a long morning. I think everybody's tired. Long afternoon, I'm sorry, for you. So people are tired. Okay. So why don't we call it a day? Thank you so much to all of the presenters. I've been in the middle of a lot of this, but I still learn so much every time I see the presentations. Thank you for all of the attendees, colleagues, friends, supporters of the light source. Again, I, I put my email address in the chat earlier and I'll do it again now, but anybody who wants to contribute in any way, please don't hesitate to send me an email or Simon or anybody involved in the project. So thank you so much and we hope to see you at the next big conference coming up in November. Take care. Bye bye.
Bye bye. Bye bye.
Bye bye folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Sekazi. Bye bye.